I'd like to call to order the Milton School Committee meeting of October 6, 2011. If you please join me in saluting the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have your agenda in front of you. This was printed before we canceled the 6:30 to 7 o'clock executive session, so we are opening at 7 o'clock. Agitions and deletions from the agenda. We're going to delete the facilities subcommittee report from this evening's agenda, and we are going to add an executive session at the end for contract negotiations concerning the AFSMI custodial unit and the residency coordinator. Anything else people want to add or? Sorry?
We'll cancel the policy subcommittee report tonight and move it to next week's meeting.
Okay. Any other amendments to tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Oh, Mary, yes.
Just, I'm sorry, I can't remember whether the FY 11 fourth quarter summary.
That should be, there should be a motion to accept.
Got it, okay.
Attached to that, sorry.
That's okay.
So that should say vote. All right. Any other corrections? If not, then we will move on to citizen speak. And do we have anyone tonight for citizen speak? Here's we do. First, we have Cara Russo. And again, for people present, this is our first citizen speak of the year. We remind folks to please identify yourself, give your address in Milton, and try to hold these two, three to five minutes.
Good evening, I'm Cara Russo. I live right around the corner on Gulliver Street. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Boosters Swing for Sports Golf and Tennis Tournament. I'm one of the committee chairs along with John Davis, Laura Phelan, Karen Russian, Karen Davis, Karen DeLuca, and Kevin Walsh. First, I would like to thank Curry College and Wallaston Golf Club for their generosity in sponsoring this event. Without them, we couldn't pull it off, and they've just been fabulous the past couple of years, so thank you to them. And that's what I'm here to speak to you all about tonight. It's an event. It's a day when the parents of the high school athletes can get together and just have fun. I have to say, it's my favorite day, and I'm not just saying that because I'm on the committee. It really is a great day. I love seeing the golfers in their golf carts laughing, smiling. I love seeing the tennis players. I love beating John Phelan in tennis. It's just a great day, and you know, we all feel the pinch to have to pay the athletic fee. And if you have a parent of a hockey player, and I have two, that's a big check to write. And, you know, we want people to come together, to feel some parent camaraderie, just to get out there and have a good time. We're all in this together, and let's just celebrate our athlete. You know, for $175, that's how much it is per golfer, you get to golf on one of the best courses in all of New England. And that includes a box lunch, and that includes the reception. For $75, you get to play tennis on beautiful courts and a beautiful setting. So I just feel it's all good. And if you'd like to find out more about it, it's October 18, and you can email us at swingforsports@miltonboosters.com, or you can check out the Boosters website, which is www.miltonboosters.com. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cara.
Next, I think we have a duet. Denise Quealy and Patty Elliott?
Hi, my name is Patty Elliott, and I live at 97 Briarbrook Street here in Milton. Denise and I are the co-chairs for this year's Monster Dash. It's the 13th Annual Monster Dash, and it will be held on Sunday, October 30, at Cunningham Hall. The festivities will kick off at 11:30 a.m. with kids activities and pre-registration, registration, and then the road race will begin at 1 p.m. We anticipate between 300 and 400 runners and about 100 children, but all children are welcome. We're going to have lots of great activities that Denise can speak to, too. The race is organized in memory of Sam Cecchello, a Tucker student who died tragically, and the proceeds of the race support Sam's fund, which supports science at the elementary school level and the Milton public schools. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I just wanted to add, we're going to have a number improved kids fund run as part of the event, and we're really excited because we have some Tucker parents that are, have donated, they worked with the toy box, so Julian J. Ritchie, who are going to bring to bear some science projects, and rocket balloons, some really fun stuff for the kids, arts and crafts. Todd Ducharme from Glover has offered his business Cats to also work with the children. So for $7 per child, or $15 max per family, you really get a lot for your money. We have some food that will be donated, and also food we'll have for sale. We have a DJ that's going to be super fun for the kids, which I know everybody likes, adults and kids. And the fun run, so we encourage costumes. We hope that everybody sees their costumes, including the runners that will be running the 5K. This is a really fun community event with, I have to say, a very loving, dedicated group of volunteers. So we're really proud to be involved with this race in memory of Sam Cecchello, and we look forward to it. So it's Sunday, October 30, at Cunningham Hall.
And if you would like to get an application online, you can visit us at www.miltonfoundationforeducation.org or active.com/coolrunnings. You can register online before the event for $20, and day of event for $25. And as Denise said, it's $7 per child, a cap of $15 per family. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have applications, too, that I can leave here.
Can I just give a little kudos to Mary Gormley and Marilyn Duckett for their participation in working with us. We're going to have some high school community participate today, we're really excited about that. Thank you so much for that, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Better be wants to borrow my hat.
Do we have anyone else who is interested in citizen speak this evening? Thank you, then. We'll move on to some approval of some school committee meetings from this summer. The first one are the minutes of July 22, which are in your packets. Yes, Ms. Kelly?
I'll move the minutes of July 22.
Second.
Second by Mr. Walker. Any comments, additions, corrections? Yes, Ms. Kelly?
Just a comment in that these minutes might be, I guess, perceived if reading our old, our regular minutes as a little bit different, and that's because this was a morning, I think, a morning meeting, that the majority of the school committee came, and it was also scheduled as a finance subcommittee. So some of these minutes will be just a little bit different in terms of the way they're presented, but it's still what happens at these meetings.
One addition?
Yes, Ms. Kelly.
Under 3A?
Yep.
I would add, the intention was still to find an additional .5 FTE in savings.
Ms. Kelly, would you accept that as a friendly amendment? Anything else? Hearing none, I'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the minutes of July 22? Opposed, abstaining, one. It's 4-0-1. Now we'll move on to the minutes of August 30. Entertained a motion?
So moved, second.
All right, we'll switch this time. Mr. Walker moved, Ms. Kelly second. Any additions, corrections, comments on the minutes of August 30? Hearing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. And then we'll move to September 9. Who wants to take a turn this time? Mr. Cahane moves.
Second.
Second, Ms. Kelly. Any, again, additions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes of September 9? Opposed, abstaining, one abstention. It's 4-0-1. And we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Pavlicek. Well, I'm very, very happy to introduce to the public tonight in the school committee, I'd ask you to join us at the table, two of our very talented Pierce Middle School teachers, Stephanie Sherman and Robin Thompson. Will you join us?
Hello. Hi.
So one of our goals of the school district is to involve our staff and our students in statewide, national recognition programs, whether it be art, writing, music, and we're always looking for avenues to have Milton staff and students involved in competing and showing, putting their best foot forward. And so I was so proud when James Chet announced that this is the art team from Pierce Middle School, and they competed and won in the Quincy Arts Festival. And so John Phelan, Matt Gillis, and I had the pleasure, I went through the Pierce the other day, and they have student artwork in the Pierce School in a hallway that you would think that you were in a museum in New York. That artwork, it just makes the whole school come alive, and you could take it and frame it. And so we are so fortunate that you are teaching Milton students, and I said, when I rang them and asked them to come tonight, I said, what better to teach art and do art, and that they're recognized at the state and area level. So I'm very, very proud to introduce you tonight, again, Stephanie Sherman and Robin Thompson. Will you share the competition and tell us about your artwork, and so for the public in the school committee to enjoy? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you. So I painted a portrait of my grandfather over the summer, and I heard about the contest, actually, from Ms. Sherman, and I really didn't expect anything. I entered it into the contest, and I was very pleasantly surprised when they called me and said that it had won Best in Show. And it's special because it is my grandfather that I painted. They painted it for my aunt, so it's going to stay in the family. But yes, it was, it was a great experience. Students were there, we actually had some students that entered their work in the student portion of the competition, and so they actually got to see it and see their art teachers as actual artists, so I think it was, it was just a great experience.
And you could hear the class in the classroom next door, because they knew about it, and a couple of standing ovations, it was really nice. And I won third place for my landscape that was painted in Walpole over the summer. We had taken a plein air class together, and this is my second landscape ever. So the first was in like sixth grade or something. I think I'm changing my subject matter. It was successful.
Yeah, it was nice that we took a class together, plein air, so painting outside, and we get to bring that into the classroom for our students. So they get to see us, some of the work that we created as students. We're always learning and growing as artists.
And I think it's really cool. Like, you go to school, too?
Yeah.
They were especially proud of it.
And we do our homework.
Yes.
Well, that's excellent. Thank you very much for coming and sharing that with us.
And before you leave, last year when we were working on a project, we had to wait for you to fly in. Would you share your experience from last year, the conference that you went to?
Oh, yeah, that was amazing.
It was wonderful, the National Art Education Association Convention. We went to it this year. It was in Seattle, last year, in Seattle. Great experience, got to meet with other art teachers, they had wonderful workshops, this large room filled with different vendors, we got
Freebies.
Freebies that we brought back to the classroom. Lots of freebies. And this year, actually, we're going to be presenting at the convention in March. It's in New York, so we're going to be actually giving a presentation. So we're excited about that. A little nervous, but excited.
And you're making sure we can redo the halls at Pierce, too, so that's on the list.
We have six schools that we could.
Okay.
And I think it's important for the school committee to know, and the public to know, that you have gone to these conferences at your own expense, even the registration at the conference and all of the air. And when we worked with Fuller, we all bonded when we worked on that Fuller Art Project, and you really were strong contributors, and as a result, you have the smart boards in your classrooms now.
Yay!
Yes, and that has been a wonderful experience. We have, yeah, we're still learning, the students know more about the smart boards than we do, so they can help us out. But it's great, because now we can show these, you know, beautiful prints, super large images of paintings that before we had books where we'd have to like pass it around, and we're only limited by what we can find on the internet, so it's wonderful. It really is.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You set a high bar, thank you very, very much. Next, I'd like to move on to welcome John Phelan, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Personnel, and Martha Sherman, our Elementary Social Studies Language Arts Coordinator and Title I Coordinator. John and Martha will be presenting our MCAS results to the school committee and the public.
I think that's the first time I've ever heard Martha's title get shortened.
Shortened, I know.
It's not like it grows every year.
Thank you. Well, they're setting up, I'll just say, I think it's so exciting that Milton teachers are presenting at a national conference. I don't know how often that happens, but I don't recall hearing that before, and I just think it's wonderful. Very exciting.
They're proud to have the venue to show off their artwork. They were proud to be asked to show you.
Well, welcome and good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank Martha Sherman for putting together the presentation that you're about to see. It's an exciting presentation to let the public know, and you know, as our school committee, the great progress that we feel we have made in every school in terms of our MCAS testing and our annual yearly progress as measured by the state and the federal government. So we're very excited to be here tonight. Martha does a great deal of work each summer on these scores that are able to be put together for all six schools and all the principals, and they come right out of her computer and her small room over at the Cunningham. So we thank her very much for her time. Tonight's agenda, we're going to talk to you about the school and district adequate yearly progress data. We're going to review the highlights of our scores and some of our challenges, and then we're going to see how we do measure our student success and talk to you about next steps that we, as a district, are always looking to move ahead with each year.
Thanks for your praise, Ron. As I've shown you over the years, there is a trajectory that the state has published that puts us on a line to have all students, according to NCLB, proficient or advanced by 2014. This year, those targets have moved up to a higher level. So reaching those targets is becoming more and more difficult as we get towards that 2014. For English Language Arts, it's 95.1, and for math, it's 92.2. If you look at the past two years, it was 90.2 and 84.3. So those are significant differences in the targets that our MCAS schools have to meet for the next two years. So talking about NCLB terminology, if a school is assigned accountability status, there are certain designations and consequences to what those identifications mean. If a school is identified for improvement, corrective action, or restructuring, and those are the three levels of status, you have to do an explanation of the reasons for the identification, what the district and school are doing to improve, how parents and guardians can come involved, and how you communicate with them. And for Title I schools, you have to publish school choice, which means that eligible students who receive free and reduced lunch are eligible to choose another school to attend if the schools are not targeted for improvement. You also have to offer to those students supplemental educational services, which is tutoring beyond the school day. There's a per pupil amount set aside in the Title I grant for that, and I am in the process right now of securing agencies, which the Department of Ed sends us. We have a list of eligible agencies. We have to contract with those agencies, set up information nights for parents, have the parents choose the tutoring, how many sessions for that dollar allocation, and monitor that throughout the school year. When the district is identified for improvement, you also, again, have to explain what the identification means to the public, the reason for the identification, the corrective actions that the district is going to take, and how parents and guardians can participate in improvement. And just one clarification, it's always, it's difficult for the public to wrap their head arounds it as it is ours. The highest identification is no status. No status is the best you can be, and to me, that's always, it's counterintuitive to what you would think, but when people see that no status, they look at it as more of a negative term. But no status means that we're in good shape. So there are improvement ratings if we're looking at the schools on that trajectory to reach the proficient or advanced by 2014. And the five improvement categories put you in a range about where you are on that trajectory. So we can be above target, we've improved above the target range, on target, we're within that range of improvement. The improvement below target, we're below the baseline but making progress, so we're still in an okay range. No change, meaning the improvement was similar to past years, or declined, which means the improvement had a backwards trend for that year. Again, improvement is rated in subgroups. So there are a lot of subgroups. The speaking groups are the aggregate, which is all of the students who are tested, limited English proficient, special education, low income, African American, Asian or Pacific Islander, Hispanic, Native American, or white.
So these are the standard forms that we get from the DESC that give you a lot of information. This table has information about the Cunningham and the Collycott, and we have one for each school, but we want to spend a little more time on one so you can understand how these forms are made up. First of all, speaking to the second slide we had about being on target, I think if we remember five years ago when we were worried, could every district keep moving up that scale? Could we all keep, continue that type of success? It's great to know that on the right-hand side of every one of our schools' reports, we are on target. Every one of our schools, excluding the Collycott and the Cunningham who are up there right now, we are on target to match that no child left behind goal of having all children proficient by 2014. That is a very tough mark to make. We also want to let you know, as Martha had stated, that our status at these two schools, which is on the top band in the middle of the page, we are no status in most of our schools. At the Collycott, we're in no status, and we're improvement for one of the subgroups, even though we passed for all subgroups. We have made improvement. When you get down to how did we do this year, you look to the column on the right that says 2011, and you notice that in the aggregate, we passed in both math and in ELA, which is English Language Arts, and all of our subgroups passed in both of those subjects. So we are very, very pleased with the performance of not only the entire school at Collycott, but also the subgroups as well. As we move down to Tucker School, did we move ahead two slides? Okay. As we move down to the Cunningham School, if you could go back one slide, at the Cunningham School, we have a similar success. As you notice on the right-hand side, we are on target at the overarching goal of meeting the no child left behind standard. The Cunningham School has no status, again, that's the highest category that you can have as a school and as a district. And as you notice, if you go to the 2011 scores, which are at the bottom of the page, we have the school making their mark in the aggregate, which is all students in both math and ELA, and in all subgroups in both math and ELA. So again, this yes, 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 yes trend is a good story in public schools.
And so to Mr. Phelan's point, if we go back to the Collycott, the improvement year one in the subgroup in math, you can see after you receive no for two years, you get identified, so it's yes this year. In the aggregate in math, the Collycott made AYP. Next year, if they make AYP again, then they'll be off and they'll get no status. So if you get two no's in a row, that's when you're picked up, but then you, if you make it for two years in a row, then you go back to no status.
And at the subgroup level, that means all of your subgroups have to make that significant progress. Not just one out of the three or two out of the three, but all three of the three or however many subgroups you have. So that's, that's all students in each subgroup need to make that passing rate. Mrs. Kelly?
Just where it says improvement year two subgroups, that's referencing the 2010 no.
That's correct. So we'd have to get two years of yeses, all subgroups would have to pass for two years in a row. So as we move over to the next slide with the other two elementary schools, so Glover School up on the right-hand side is on target in ELA, and it's great to see that they're actually above target in math. They made significant progress in math, so they do have a no status in both subjects, which is great news. When you look at their 2011 scores in the aggregate and in the subgroups, they have yes, 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 yes. So we have all students moving ahead, and we have each subgroup moving ahead at a nice rate, which allows us to have this school get two yeses in a row, to Superintendent Gormley's point. If you see in 2009, the subgroups did not pass AYP, nor in 2008. With the scores in 2010 and 2011, the Glover School, which we'll highlight later in the program, has now been able to earn its way off that designation of needs improvement, and now is in a no status category, which again is the highest status. That is a great success story at this day and age with the, with the No Child Left Behind Act.
Ms. Kelly?
Could we define what a subgroup is? Because isn't there a limit? If there's under a certain amount of students, they wouldn't get picked up on this. However, they may be a concern of the schools.
Correct. So a subgroup is any group of students that were outlined by Martha Sherman in slide four, special education, low-income students, students of minority status, African American, Black, Asian, Hispanic, Native American, whatever the category is. You do need to have a critical mass to be considered to have a subgroup, which I believe is 40 students. So at the 30 students, so at the Glover School, their subgroups, which I believe are outlined in another slide, are special education and I believe African American, Black. At the Tucker School, again, great news for the Tucker School. Up in the right-hand corner, no change and on target is their area or their designation, their corrective action for subgroups, which means they have to go two years in a row for the English Language Arts and subgroups. for the English Language Arts in subgroups, and they're no status, which is the highest status for math. Getting down into their scores, in 2011, all subgroups in both English Language Arts and math passed. That is fantastic news. If you look for the math, that's two years in a row that their subgroups and the aggregate have made it in math, and they have now shedded that designation for math and gone to no status. In English Language Arts, they scored a yes in the subgroups, and again, with one more year, next year, or the year that we're in, if they get a yes in that subgroup category. The Tucker School is now one subgroup away from being off total status that they have been working at for some time, and that is a huge success. And we'll talk about some accommodations at the Tucker School bar as well later in the slides. The last two schools, the Pierce Middle School, in the aggregate, up on the top right-hand score side of the column, they are on target. The Pierce Middle School is reaching that trajectory at a rate that the state and the federal government feels is on target. They do have work in subgroups. If you look at their scores, they are consistently a yes in both math and English Language Arts in the aggregate. They have been for years and they continue to be. They have had a yes in subgroups, but they need to get yes in subgroups two years in a row. So this year, our subgroups in both math and English Language Arts could use more work. In the area or the subgroup in ELA that we need to focus on this year would be students with a status of low income. In the math, it is the low-income students, the subgroup of special education, and the subgroup of African American, black. So that is the challenge that the Pierce Middle School continues to work on at their level. At the high school, again, on target, on target for their trajectory. They are getting off subgroups in English Language Arts and have no status in math. If you look at the scores up in 2011, yes, 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 yes. The one no that they had in subgroups in 2010, they remedied this year with a yes in all subgroups, and if they do one more year, they will also be shed that mark of need to improvement in subgroups and move off that designation. So as a whole, these are terrific scores, and we're very excited to show you some of the highlights right now.
Mr. Walker?
John, could you go back to that slide? So at the Pierce, where we're seeing the issues with particular subgroups, low-income, special ed, low-income, African American, black, do we know whether those are students that went through our elementary system or whether they entered into the Pierce from somewhere else?
James Jet knows how many of them were late, how often they were late, what class they have, when they entered the system, whether they've been with us since kindergarten. There is data that they disaggregate at the school to determine each student's score, their questions they got correct, questions they didn't get correct, what services those children are getting, when they entered the system, and what their subgroup category is. So we do collect that data, and Mr. Jet collects that data. You go to the table at that level, at the school committee level, but James Jet will present his scores when he comes to the school committee this fall.
And to Mr. Walker's point?
Is that scheduled?
We can do, we can get that data for you. If you have questions tonight or as we move along, we can absolutely disaggregate the data and answer any of the questions you have.
Great. Well, that would be my question.
The Pierce is due to PP force in November.
There is a schedule already with the schools designated with the date. The last chart, you have to report as a district. And the reason why this chart is important is that this chart also includes students that we have, that are the Milton Public Schools students who may be out of district and attending school in a special education school that is not run by the Milton Public Schools. Those scores are factored in to our district-wide score. So as an example, at Pierce, their special education designation or one of their subgroups was different from their overall designation. They, the district-wide six through eight score in the aggregate, I believe, or in the subgroup, was a no. That means that the students who are not in Pierce, but district-wide, we are responsible for in grade six through eight, their scores get factored in if they attend a school like Landmark or the Carol School or other schools that we send our children to. So that's why they have a district page as well. They're not students that are with us every day, but they are students who are in the Milton Public Schools, be it their special education school setting, and we do have to report to the state.
So to Mr. Phelan's point, in math, the second, the third buydown in math at grades six through eight, when you factored in those students who were in out-of-district placements, they did not, we did not make the AYP in the aggregate when you entered in those children. And to Ms. Kelly's point, do you mind, Mr. Phelan? To Ms. Kelly's point, we had at the elementary, all yeses in the aggregate and the subgroups. And we can tell you which subgroups exist at each school, but in the low-income area, only one school has an identified mass of forty. But if you take all of the students district-wide, if you look under Language Arts, in the aggregate, we didn't make AYP. So to Mrs. Kelly's point, when you group those children district-wide in grades three through five, so the way we disaggregate the data and we examine the data, and I always say it gives significance to no child being left behind, we have to, at the individual schools, identify who those children are to make sure that when we're running before-school or after-school groups, when we're running our Saturday programs, that we're providing for those students and giving them the extra supports that they need. Because next year, at the X school, they might have two more students in that subgroup and have an identified group. And so this data is very, very important, and we could give you at each school how many subgroups have the critical mass that Mr. Phelan was speaking about. But again, they look at every single student's scores and examine every single student's achievement.
So we have some highlights.
Collycott School, as you mentioned, is in the aggregate in all subgroups in ELA and math, and have been commended again for high growth. This is the second year in a row that the Collycott School has received a commendation from the state. And in talking about the commendations, the three Milton schools who received commendations were three of only one hundred and twenty-seven schools statewide to receive commendations. So that is a phenomenal achievement for those schools. Cunningham School made AYP in the aggregate and all subgroups in ELA and math, and I don't want you to feel discarded about the Cunningham School. You're going to see some magnificent growth in their test scores later on in the presentation. They made an amazing growth this year as well. Glover School made AYP in the aggregate and all the subgroups in ELA and math, and you saw that they returned to the no-status designation. So because of that, they were commended for exiting the NCLB accountability status and for narrowing the proficiency gap, so that in their subgroups, they are seeing less of a gap in this. So that's phenomenal work as well. And we'll go into detail of what these commendations, what the evidence is to back those up. Tucker made AYP in the aggregate and all subgroups in ELA and math, and also received commendation for high growth, which is an amazing, great story. Last year, you saw on slides from the presentation that Tucker's growth was in that top quartile, even though they did not receive a positive notification in their subgroups, their growth has been phenomenal over time. So this year, because they maintained that growth and even went a little bit further, they received a commendation. Pierce Middle School made AYP in the aggregate and ELA and math, but the subgroups did not make adequate yearly progress. And Milton High School made adequate yearly progress in the aggregate and all subgroups, say AYP in aggregate at least once. So those are great highlights.
So the challenges that we already have, our administrative group is working on this year, would be obviously the goal that we have is to make adequate yearly progress with all students in the aggregate, in all subgroups every year. That is a system goal that we expect every child to reach that mark. We want to sustain the achievement and the growth that we're seeing. And when we show you the growth charts in a few minutes, you will see some incredible work being done by the children and the teachers every day in each of the schools. And that growth, remember, is measuring how well a student did last year compared to this year. It's measuring him against him or herself. So we're really seeing students making growth each year. And to me, as an educator, I believe that's the most important data that we can look at. We are always addressing the specific grade level and school area concerns. So on the first professional day back in August, teachers and principals got the data. They looked at it as a school. They looked at it then by grade, and then they looked at the exam by standard, and what are we doing with our curriculum and how is it matching up? So that kind of layering down and focusing in on the areas of curriculum and assessment that we need to work on, and who are the children that we're working with that need these supports? All that work is done each year, grinding that work down to a very, very specific level. We always are addressing specific content and curriculum issues related to standards. We can talk about the PD Day later on in the program. We do have PD going on tomorrow, as a matter of fact, with some very clear work for our elementary staff, working on writing and connecting our former goals to the new Common Core, which is going to be great work, and we're doing that with our curriculum teams as well. And as always, we're continuing to align the curriculum to the new standards, the new Massachusetts frameworks, and having corresponding assessments that measure that so we know internally, are our students making the mark? So we can predict whether or not they're going to have success on these standardized tests called MCAS. So those are the challenges that we're working on this year.
And just to follow up on that, just to explain, in English Language Arts and in math at the elementary level, Holly Concanon and I have had an ongoing curriculum team working. We delved into the new frameworks, which were published, pre-publication last March, and were published officially in April or May. So we are now looking at those, exposing the teachers to those, looking at the differences, where we need to change and adjust, and mapping out the curriculum based on the new Common Core standards. We are at the point now that every teacher has a copy of the new alignment, and tomorrow, as John said, we are going to be working on the writing portion, which has had some dramatic changes from the expectations before. So we are constantly in the work of getting our teachers familiar with these new documents, what the expectations and standards are that are going to be measured as we go forward. We also have the grade-level facilitators, which is another group of teachers that meet after-school. We expose them to some of the curriculum things that we're doing with our curriculum teams. They bring it back and meet with teachers at their grade-level groups back at the schools. So we have a number of opportunities to keep teachers, principals, and people who are working directly with our students informed of the changes and the new expectations in our new frameworks that are based on the Common Core.
Ms. Kelly?
You mentioned dramatic changes, which sends off alarm bells in my head. At some point, not tonight, can we either get a written document or a presentation that would highlight these differences? Because I don't know, I'm hoping the bar is being raised, and if it's not, I want to talk about it. So at some point, if we could...
And I also have copies of the new frameworks for you tonight in this pocket.
You mean pleasure reading.
But they are much friendlier, much more succinct documents. You know, by grade level, and ELA especially, by grade level, expectations by grade level. So it's a very clear delineation of what students are expected to know and learn by grade level. So it's a much clearer, teacher-friendly, educator-friendly document to see what our students need to do.
Sure. I also was going to ask about having that presentation on the way. It's very curious. And I'd also like to see ways, if you can think of this in your presentation, ways that parents can support their students in the work of the changes that have come through the Common Core standards with the writing. That'd be great. Thank you.
We have, just as an example, we can provide this after the presentation, but tomorrow, as an example, the teaching staff at the elementary level, led by Martha Sherman, Holly Concanon, and our four elementary principals, are literally taking the green book, which I have with me tonight. We are having every teacher bring their book with them. They will open up to pages twenty-two to thirty-four, which address the writing standards, and they give exemplars of what it looks like physically. They show you a picture of what a kindergarten writing sample should be, what a first-grade writing sample should be, all the way up to fifth grade. Teachers will be analyzing those samples, getting to know the curriculum format, coming up with their own exemplars and asking, what do we do now and what are we expected to do? So we're shaping our curriculum based literally on the curriculum standards. So that will be a good three hours workshop tomorrow, using the new standards with the exemplars. And everything that we're working with our teachers on is accessible to the parents. And it's on our websites, just the Common Core. We will be presenting, I believe at the end of this month, the updated online portion of what we want our parents to know and be able to do. And that will be coming up at the, the first layer will be coming up, I believe, at the end of October. We'll have a second layer coming up around December, and the final version will be out in January. So I think that will give parents a better idea of what their child should know and be able to do and how it relates to the standards.
And so I, Mr. Phelan quickly went over that, but in response to, remember Kelly had asked about the curriculum being online, and to your point about parents, the curriculum people working with John Phelan were very thoughtful, and they have stratified the work into three different levels, user-friendly, and then if you want to go beyond that level, again, I'm repeating what John said, there'll be more information if you're a parent who wants to delve deeper into any particular area, and if you ultimately want all of the curriculum and you want to view all of it. So again, I appreciate that they've been thoughtful in it. The rollout will be between now and the end of the year, and during each rollout, we'll present in front of you so that parents can know how to access it, and the principals will be following up.
Good.
So good news. So some of the detail behind the good news that Martha will share about each of our three schools.
So as I said, three of one hundred and twenty-seven schools commended in the state were Milton Public Schools. So I am just thrilled with that news, and I think we all should share in the joy of that and celebrate that. Collycott, Tucker, and Glover. Collycott and Tucker were commended for high growth, and that means that the median student growth was sixty percent or higher for two consecutive years. Schools have to have the aggregate median growth of sixty percent or higher in 2010 and 2011, meet the adequate yearly progress participation rate, which means they have to have above a ninety percent participation in the MCAS assessments, and for an attendance rate and carry same school code and assess at least twenty more. That is to prevent a school, if you redistrict or realign your schools for, you have to keep solid for two years. So Collycott, this is the, the numbers broken down. In 2010, their median student growth percentile was sixty percent in ELA and sixty-five percent in math. In 2011, it was sixty-four percent in ELA and eighty-three percent in math. That is significant growth. That is absolutely amazing. And in the second grade, participation and attendance was one hundred percent in all of those areas, so refined, and they carry the same school code and assess two hundred and fifty-seven students.
For the folks listening, and could you give a quick definition of aggregate median growth? What is that, sixty percent?
Growth is coming up.
Okay. Sixty doesn't sound too good to people sometimes.
Good point.
Just to, just to point out before we get into the growth, moderate growth is between forty and sixty percent. Anything above that is considered high growth. But we will go into what growth is further on in the slideshow. Tucker School, again, was commended for high growth last year, and I know you saw these slides, and Masha Yuretsky was very pleased to present these slides to show... slides, and Masha Yuretsky was very pleased to present these slides to show the high growth that Tucker made last year. But in ELA, their median student growth percentile last year was 78% and 80% in math, which is phenomenal. This year, we had a slight drop in the ELA, but still 70% median student growth percentile and 81.5 in math. Again, that participation rate and attendance rate, 100% in EPS, and they carry the same school code.
Before we go to Glover, in a lot of these, all this information is online on the DESE website, and we'll show you the growth charts. But when you click on the Tucker School, when you click on the DESE website, you click on Milton Public Schools, and then you click on Tucker School, and then you have every single elementary school in the whole state lined down, and you have all the criteria in the right. When you click on what school has the highest growth in the state, it's the Tucker School. When you click on the school that has the highest growth in math in the state, it's the Tucker School. And when you click on what has the highest grade five math scores, it's the Tucker School. And what school has the highest growth in math for students of minority status, it is the Tucker School.
Wow.
It is an amazing stat, stat to keep in mind, that the Tucker School, for two years in a row, has been incredibly successful engaging all their students. And no short shakes, they're fifth and sixth in ELA. So it is really tremendous growth that you're seeing at the Tucker School.
That's amazing.
So you can go on.
Glover School, commendation for narrowing the proficiency gap and exiting NCLB. So narrowing the efficiency gap for high-need students. So students belonging to one or more of the following subgroups, and also exiting their NCLB accountability status, so going to that no-status range.
And may I ask a question, Martha? With the group, is it the critical mass of 40 to have an identifiable group?
So the positive CPI change for the special education, that was the group that they measured. In 2009, 2010, the median student growth percentile for special education in ELA was 66.3 and 74.6. So that's an upgrade for 2011 to point plus 8.3. In math, 57.1 to 62.9 plus 5.8. Then 2010 to 2011, 74.6 to 81.9 plus 77.3, 62.9 to 82.8 plus 19.9. That's phenomenal growth for special education. The overall composite performance index, which is all the MCAS scores added together, they're given a number value, added together and averaged by the number of students that take the test, five points of greater, they had that. And then increasing the number of needs of student scoring in proficient and advanced. In 2009 to 2010, it was equal, but in math, 26 to 39 plus 13. And 2010 to 2011, 26 to 48 plus 22. That's huge. And 39 to 55 plus 16. So again, huge growth in those high-need subgroups. Again, some more indicators, they had to really work hard for their commendation. AYP participation and attendance, yes, carry the same school code, and you saw the graph earlier of exiting accountability status. So they're back in the no-status range. So that's wonderful news for them.
So we always like to remind everyone that this is just one criterion that we measure student success by. We feel that our students, if they are doing well academically, we hope that they're also doing well with activities in after-school, in athletics, especially at the high school and middle school, and participating in clubs at all levels. In the future meetings, I believe this month, we will be hosting Milton High School, Dr. Arangio and his staff, talking about the FNT and AP scores, which are moving in a positive direction that we're very excited about as well. And we always talk about the graduation rate in the college acceptance. So this is one part. I think it's good for the community to understand that we look at more than just MCAS and student growth when we look at our success. And the end game is Milton High School. So a quick slide before we get to growth slides is, if you look at just grade 10 ELA, we have great scores as we go through, 2009, 10 to 11. This is a traditional chart that we show. But if you notice, between 2009 and 2011, in advanced, we have students moving up from 33% to 41% of students in advanced, and we have a decreasing red bar, which are the students who are not passing. The high school continues to do great things with their MCAS scoring, that level of student achievement. In math, this chart, I just don't think that we have enough appreciation for. The blue, or the dark blue or purple band to the left is how many students are in advanced in math. So you have 57, then 60, then 59% of your students in math are advanced, not proficient, not needs improvement, but advanced. As we look at some of the scores around the state, there are very few that have that many in advanced only. So 60% of our students are in the advanced area in the math, which I'm very excited about. We have 28% in our proficient, which gives us almost an 88% proficient or advanced status in high school math. Great stuff, and they should be very proud, and they do a great job. And that is a chart that's indicative of the work that our kindergarten through eighth grade teachers do, as well as our high school teachers. So when we talk about the growth model, which we introduced to you last year, we want to give you some graphic representation of what some of that information portrayed earlier when we talk about growth model, and what does 60 mean, what does 80 mean, and give you a little perspective.
So each student's rate of change is compared to other students with similar test score history, which is part of all their academic peers. And the rate of change is expressed as a percentile. You heard me say, student, median student growth percentile. So growth is reported by district, school, grade, subjects, and family included by classroom. The median student growth percentile is the point at which half of the students in the group have a higher growth and half have a lower growth. So it's right in there. Growth distribution charts, which we will show you, show the percentage of students in the group growing less than, similar to, or more than their academic peers. Growth is distinct from achievements. You can achieve at a low level but grow quickly, and vice versa. Each student is compared to only their statewide academic peers, not to all of their academic students. Others with the similar test score history, it's very hard to wrap your head around that, but they are compared to students with a similar test score. And all students can potentially grow at the rate to the first, to the 99 percentile. Growth is subject, grade, and year-specific. That's what makes it so phenomenal that we have such, we've maintained such high growth because students change from year to year. Those cohorts and the groups of students are different every year. So to maintain that growth year to year is absolutely amazing. Because the different academic peer groups for each subject, grade, and year, and the same change in skills scores can yield different student growth percentile. It's extremely complicated. I'm sure Glenn could probably give us a statistical analysis of how this is figured out, but it is very, very complicated. But the information really allows us to track achievement by cohorts of like students, so that we are able to see growth over time, not, well, this took test, took the grade three test this year, the grade four test, and the tests are very different. So those scores can't be linked. This allows us to look at student growth and where they are going over time.
Before you move on, Mr. Walker had a question.
Martha, with regard to similar test score history, what's the definition of similar?
It's within a range. So students who score within a range of that test score.
Plus or minus five points, plus or minus 10 points?
I have to find that out. I'm not quite sure how close that range is. And they're grouped together, and then there's a band that they can score within that 1 to 99 percentile.
And then if they go two years in a row and they continue that high student growth, their cohort changes, so they don't stay in that cohort. So if I'm with a group of folks statewide and I do pretty well, I'm going to use layman's terms, and I have a great year, I'm compared to how I did with that group. I have two years in a row, now I'm going to leave that group because now I'm going to be compared against a higher achievement group by my test score. So they actually keep that kind of specific data. So your cohort can change if you continue to meet with high growth. Your cohort who you compare yourself to will be then more challenging. So that's data.
That's why it changes year to year.
That's how they measure the student growth.
Ms. Kelly.
So I'm sorry, I'm confused. I can see for an individual, like if I'm just looking at one of my children's growth, that makes sense. When we start, when we said we're not the same cohort, we're not even the same group of students every year, right? So when we're measuring, for some reason, I was thinking, this was taking one, you know, a third grade cohort and measuring it against how they did in fourth grade. Is that not the way they're doing it, or it is the way they're doing it? I guess I'm getting a little confused.
So the real simple way to think of it is start with a child first.
Right.
If we are a peer group and I do really well, our school is similar, and this year I have a 70% growth. If I do that for two years, I might be compared to a different group of folks. They average that out for all of our third graders at Tucker. And those scores are looked at as a grade and then looked at as a school. So there is an algorithm somewhere, or a formula somewhere, that averages that out and can demonstrate student growth, a class's growth, a school's growth, and a district's growth. So not being able to tell you what that kind of math looks like, we're definitely measuring each individual student in their, with their peer group, and then they average those scores as a school and then as a district to demonstrate what would growth be at an individual level, at a school level, and at a district level. And there's a lot of math behind that, but they believe, and I think that people believe that this is the better way to measure whether or not students are meeting with success this year compared to the last year in moving forward. As formerly how it used to be, where they would measure the third grade in 1999 versus the third grade in 2000 versus the third grade for 2001, which was really a kind of an apples and oranges depiction of student growth.
Got it.
So when we look at these, so taking that, we have, we have the next slide where we have a couple of graphs. The band in the middle is where the state says you should be. Anything to the right of that band is acceptable growth. Anything to the left of that band is not good growth. It's also a quadrant, which Professor Pavlichek would say has four quarters. It's a top right, a bottom right, a bottom left, and a top left. What you're measuring is how, the growth is what moves you from left to right. So for example, the Cunningham is way out there, on the right-hand side. But the achievement of these students is measured from the bottom to the top. So really what you want to say is you want to be in the top right quarter of that page. All of our schools are getting in the top right quarter of that page. And the reason why the circles are bigger and smaller is that's how many students are tested. So if you notice, the Tucker School has the smallest dot. The Cunningham School has a pretty good sized dot. The Pierce School is the largest. All, all 878 students at the Pierce are tested. The high school's a bigger school by population, but there's only one grade tested. So the population of students tested is smaller. So it measures how many students take the test. So if you look at all of our schools, they're all either bordering on that other side or well beyond the other side, which we feel is great growth as a district. Similar growth in math, where we have all of our schools on the right-hand side, up in the right-hand quadrant. And again, if you look at the math schools, here's the kind of where it becomes, well, how come the high school's not way in the right? Because they're so far up there, they're not growing as much, because when you have 60% of your kids already in advanced, you can't get any more water out of that rock. So you're really saying, that's why they're so high up from the bottom to the top, because their student achievement is at that point. So it's very hard to continue to grow forward when your achievement is so high, as measured by the stone child behind.
So I'm sorry. So Milton High School, right?
Yes.
Doesn't have any test in ninth grade, does have a test in 10th grade.
Correct.
What is the growth that they're measuring?
They're measuring the growth of that student population versus their eighth-grade score.
Versus their eighth-grade score. Okay.
So that's the math.
Good question.
So this is a table version of this, and this is, this is a table that allows us to go to the two different ways that we look at data now. We look at student growth, and we also look at proficient and advanced, and how much success our students have had. On the left-hand side, you're measuring the Colley Court School in ELA was 60% growth last year, 64, a plus difference of four. The Cunningham School went up 19 points in ELA. The Glover School went up 6.5 points. The Tucker went down a little in ELA, but they're still at the 70-point mark, so it's a very good score. The middle school went up in ELA, and so did the high school, went up 12 points in growth. If you want to look at the old way that we used to do the scores, it's still significant because we're still being measured by this, you always like to measure how many students were proficient or higher. How many, how many students went to that, that next bucket? Well, at the Colley Court, we had 76 students, 76% of the students in proficient or advanced, and we increased that to 79. At the Cunningham, there was 72 in proficient or higher, we increased that to 76. At the Glover, 80% were proficient or higher, 84%. At the Tucker, 60 were proficient or higher, we have 64%. At the, at the Pierce, we have 84 last year, 86, another positive direction. And at the high school, again, with all that growth that they've had, they're still moving from 86 up to 92%. It's all good stuff. Go down to math, similar directionality, there's not one negative number on this chart. I believe, actually, there's...
But the growth in math is significant between 2010 and 2011.
So look at the Colley Court, they went up, I'm sorry, back in the math, the right-hand corner, 18 points in math in their student growth. The Cunningham, 27 points in math in their growth. The Glover, 13 points in growth. Tucker, 15. The Pierce Middle School went up seven in student growth. And the high school did go down in their growth by 10, but they're still in a good category. In proficient and advanced in math, 74. In proficient and advanced, up to 86 at the Colley Court. Proficient and advanced at the Cunningham went from 68, or 69 to 80. Again, positive of 11. At the Glover, incredible strides from 67 to 80. Tucker, 62 to 66. The Pierce went up, 72 to 73. And the high school also went up as well. So measuring it by student growth, which is a new formula, measuring it by the good old-fashioned, how many are in advanced, proficient, and needs improvement, we're all positive in all categories. So we're very, we feel very fortunate.
And just as I said before, even though Cunningham didn't get a commendation, the growth and the number of students in proficient or higher, the advances that they made last year to this year were significant. And we can't let that go by. I mean, they made unbelievable growth in achievement and growth.
So ELA, real quick, this is by school. It's the same type of chart. We are, we are all of our schools placed in that quadrant. It's nice to see that I believe that we have a district, I believe we have a district score up there.
Yes.
All grades, right in the middle, is right on the 60 mark. It's actually 61. So the district as a whole is on the higher growth end, which is a very, very noted achievement. In math, on the next chart, again, similar format. This shows where each school in each grade is placed. This is, again, a grade-by-grade view, and all of our teachers have this data. And our district as a whole, again, is in that 60 area for that quadrant.
If you just look at the percent district-wide in ELA, it was 82% of our students are proficient or higher, all grades. And in math, 77% of all grades of proficient are higher. Again, that is just absolutely amazing.
So again, a table that just shows the same in ELA and math. It just shows the significant growth, positive numbers, and also we have this positive growth in our proficient or higher categories. We are very, very happy with and very appreciative of the parents that send us hard-working children, the teachers that come in every day that work hard in the classroom. This work is done by students, it's not done by anybody in this room. This work that these students are engaged in is skillfully done by the teachers that work every day in your classrooms on behalf of the children, and the principals and the coordinators who support, lead, guide... coordinators who support, lead, guide the teachers. So we're very appreciative of the Milton Public Schools staff, students, and families for what we consider to be a nice showing of student achievement and a sustaining showing of student achievement over the last few years.
So parent reports will be mailed out next week. If you didn't know, there was an error in the grade 10 scores reported.
Oh, yeah.
And they are redoing the grade 10 parent reports. There will be new data coming out regarding grade 10, so we might even have a better picture after tomorrow to let us know, you know, the changes that are being made. But the letter that was posted, there were a number of schools that were taken off of AYP status because of the new data. So we're looking at getting those reports out as soon as they can. The parent report, when you get it, will be a four-page document. The first page is a letter and an explanation. The second page is the performance level and scores. The third page is the performance compared to the school, district, state, and the growth percentile. And page four is how a student did on individual test questions and the content areas.
I was going to say, and it's very user-friendly.
It's very user-friendly document. The parent gets to see how their child did, how their child's school did, in comparison to the state in both subjects. And so the document is something that we encourage every parent to examine, not only for how their child did, but how their schools fare, in a very user-friendly way, right in their kitchen when they get their report card.
And if there's any questions, you know, speaking to the general public, if parents do have questions about those reports, they can feel free to contact their child's teachers. They're very well-versed at explaining what those reports represent.
So this is an example of what the parent would see on one frame of their student report that will be in the middle.
And won't every principal within the next month at one of their PTO meetings do an MCAS presentation of the school's data and follow-up?
Yes, they will.
Mr. Walker had a question.
Martha, on the state data error, is it that the scores were reported as lower than they should have been?
Yes.
There was an error in a question, the way a question was counted. So they have to go back and recalculate all of those test scores in relation to that question. So that question can add points or change-
Or take away points.
And then it calculates.
Add or take away points?
Not, if not, it depends on how it was scored, right?
Okay.
So everything has to be recalculated based on those questions.
Actually, I have the answer to that question because last Friday I was at a meeting with Deputy Commissioner Jeff Wolfson. I asked him how it was going.
I don't know if you're on mic.
The answer is yes, the scores are going to go up.
Okay.
I was at a meeting last Friday with Deputy Commissioner Jeff Wolfson, and I asked him how things were going, and he's like George Washington, he can never tell a lie, and he said we have to go back and fix all the scores. I said, well, there's going to be good news and bad news. He goes, well, it's always bad news for us, and we have to tell people we made a mistake. For the people getting their scores, the principals, it's going to be good news. I said, yeah, it's going to be good news for our high school kids, the scores will go up.
Great. So just lastly, we have-
May I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
To Mr. Walker's point, they're doing analysis to figure out if that one question pushed some children from failing to needs improvement or proficient to advanced. And so it's been, I'll send you the email traffic across the state. There's been lots of about this correction. DES wasn't happy. They have a very high standard on the math test. To have a mistake, they punish themselves, and they've had to send out all the new reports.
So again, the initiatives that we're taking on this year, that is a continuation from last year, continuing to align the curriculum to the new Massachusetts frameworks. Work being done tomorrow on this matter in our All-Day Professional Day. Further development of internal assessments. We're always looking to look at what our students should know and be able to do and break that down over the course of a year so we can measure whether or not they're hitting those marks throughout the year, and we can use that data to challenge, engage, or change how we work with our students. Lastly, continue to support teachers in the classroom to expand their repertoire and skills to engage all learners. This is really about making sure that we engage every single student at a high level of rigor to the expectation of the curriculum and the expectation of the math standards, and that's what it comes down to. The real work is being done by the teachers and the students, and that's who we have to support, and we thank them for their hard work. So last, we just have to make sure that we all understand that the student achievement of all students, especially when we look at the high school when we move forward. Matt, one more slide. We go back to the slide that this is one component of how we measure ourselves in the Milton Public Schools. We want kids to be engaged in rigor during the day, connected to their school through activities and sports and clubs, their parents connected to the school. We want them to do well and aspire to and take advantage of all the advanced placement courses as they reach the high school. This is a K-12 district, pre-K-12 district. Not only do well in SAT, AP, but their MCAS, have a fantastic graduation rate, and we want to measure this school system by what us students do after they get out of Milton High, which is go to great places and do great things. So we appreciate your time. I'd like to again thank Martha Sherman for all of her work in amassing this data and this presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support and the work that you do for the schools as well.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you, John.
Just a really quick question, more of a rhetorical question. The last page, I was glad to see that you talked about all of these things being just as important, if not more important. But were you saying that the high school principal is coming to tell us all this next time?
There's going to be two more meetings.
Graduation rate.
Yeah, so the high school principal with his staff will come and report on AP at the next meeting, and then at the meeting following that, I believe last weekend in October, he will address SAT scores as well.
Okay, and so it would be really nice to have this page filled out for us and the public. You know, how you have student involvement. So what is the student involvement? What is the graduation rate? What are, you know, they're reporting to us, but it would be nice sometimes just to have one page that says, this is our graduation rate for this year.
We have that.
Yes, I know you do. So it would be great to have that as a, for us as well as for the public.
Okay.
And to Ms. Begley Jones's point, we're also going to have a presentation on the science MCAS data.
Ms. Kelly, have a question.
That was my question about the science. When would that be scheduled for? Because I think that's pretty important.
We are trying to fit Marilyn Decker in at the last week of October. Next week is pretty full because we meet this Wednesday coming up. So we have sub-finance on Tuesday, and then we have school committee, and we already have the AP data that night. And then we have each of the schools reporting and scheduled to report, and we'll put Marilyn, I believe, in the last week of October. And each school, when they report, will do their scores, math, ELA, and science, but we'll have Marilyn be in front of this group individually as well, just for science.
Great. And then on the ELA and math assessments, can we just sort of get a status of where we're at with that in terms of what's in place where and what the timeline is for getting the remaining assessments in place?
So as an example, at the elementary level, there are approximately 10 math assessments at every grade level in math. They're done by unit, and there's an assessment at the end of every unit. It's a quick 10-question quiz that students take. It's more about not for their grade, it's more about measuring whether or not they're hitting the mark, and it's data that all the teachers can look at across the system. The ELA is starting out with reintroducing the Gates-McGinnity, which is a standardized, normed test nationwide to show what the reading level is of every student, and we'll be doing that one through five, starting again this year. That used to be done last, through grade six up to Pierce. We're trying to start the baseline data with how well are our students reading and comprehending at each grade level so that data can follow them along. When we finish the curriculum work this year of aligning to the scope and sequence in the new frameworks, we will then insert our assessments probably quarterly to start. That's how we started our math assessments. So when we ask what should a child know and be able to do in the area of ELA in grade four, we will have an assessment that will measure reading, reading comprehension, fluency, and have a writing sample. And so those will also reflect, if you look at the green book that we have over there, we'll use the exemplars to lead what that, to be the end game for what those assessments will look like.
And I guess what I'm most concerned with is the middle school. I think the middle school still is sort of in that gray area in terms of where we want it to be. And I think, you know, from a prioritized perspective, if we could get assessments that would help everybody look at, you know, how those grades are doing throughout the year, I think that would be great. And I know you guys are working on that, but I just think it needs to be made a high priority.
Okay.
Ms. Sheridan, you had a question?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I would just like to say that this was an amazing presentation and with amazing information that's shared with us, and this doesn't happen by accident at all. Those kind of numbers and that level of growth is outstanding. And John Phelan mentioned, you know, that it takes the parents, and it takes the children, and the teachers, and the principals, and the staff, but it takes the leadership, the complete administration, the support of the town. And I really look forward, over the next few months, I hope that parents at home are paying attention to these school committee meetings and watching, because as each one of these schools comes to report, they will share with us exactly some of the supports that are in place that make this possible, that make this kind of growth possible. And, I mean, you've already said it doesn't happen everywhere, but it's amazing, and it didn't happen by accident, and I just want to say thank you. It makes me proud to be a school committee member. Thank you.
And to Ms. Sheridan's point, it was interesting to me. We're working on the district goals, the strategic plan, and when we sat and we went over during the retreat last year's goal and strategic plan, when you looked at the Tucker and read the goals and the plan, it was if you're hearing Ms. Shuretsky talk to you every day, every week, at every leadership meeting. So what their plan mapped out they were going to do is what she advocated for, she reported at leadership meetings, what the principals spoke to John Phelan, Matt, and I about on a daily basis. So the schools have a plan, they've identified the areas that are challenges, they know what their strengths are, they have to continue to work on those. But to see every school come up with a plan and then to, again, advocate for their school, their plan, the programs that they're going to put in place, that's how, as Ms. Sheridan said, success just doesn't happen, and achievement just doesn't happen. You have to have a plan, and you have to implement that plan, and you have to stay with that plan. And as I said, when people have different feelings about MCAS and all of these tests, I just want every Milton child, student, to excel on every test. And with the MCAS, it gives you outstanding comparative data. And I think the best story about MCAS, and to your point about families, Jeff, James Jett will go into the cafeteria at the Pierce, and he'll ask how many students saw their own MCAS scores. And he brings students in, and he discusses, and he encourages teachers to sit down with students. Now, elementary, it's a little bit, they're a little young, but at middle school, to really own their scores. Because when you think of it, John Phelan has tutored us that at the middle school, every student is tested in all of the areas. Where at the high school, it's only the 10th graders. So that is a huge charge to that middle school and a huge curriculum area.
Ms. Kelly.
Can I just ask, with the MCAS data and the growth data, is it possible to sort students in that, like, do we get the growth data directly from the state and it is what it is? Or can you sort of sort through? I guess what I've been wondering about is for those students who have been with us since the beginning, started in kindergarten, I would love to see what the growth model results would be of that data. But I don't know whether that's something that districts are given the ability to do.
One of the hard parts of, we use, the state provides a software data warehouse. We used to have to buy a software to do it. We kind of are still buying the one software to help us do certain reports and using the state because it's not fully done yet. But what that, what the data warehouse software does not provide us to be able to sort by is by when a student entered the system. So that's the one criterion that they don't feel is important for them to have to keep track of, or it might be too hard to keep track of. So when we try to do that, we do that on our own. We have in our database a start date for every child. And so we try to sort by students who have been here since K or since 5, et cetera, to try to have junctions that we can measure that data from. So we do have a ballpark of what that would look like, but it wouldn't be an exact state reporting mechanism that we would be able to get from them.
Sharon.
Just piggyback on that comment, John, that I think that the reason that they don't do that, Mrs. Kelly, is because there's so much movement for so many students. Some of them go in and out of districts and that it's hard to track the actual start date because-
Right, but I think that's where, if a district would be able to sort out, for those people who have come in new after kindergarten or something, you would be able to look at that cohort, you know, outside of that cohort. So I think that's what I would be looking for is a true measurement, well, not a true measurement, but certainly one way of looking at success in the Milton Public Schools.
The individual principals, to Mr. Phelan's point, they do, they actually sit down with us with the names of the students who have failed, and that's one of the criteria after their name when they entered the Milton Public Schools, and whether they're in one of the subgroups, or whether they're being provided special education, and what are we, what are the supports that we're going to give individual and small groups of children? And on the spectrum, how we're going to move more and more students to advanced. That's a curriculum issue, how to challenge and get more students into the advanced.
To that point, could we get off of the DOE sort of those charts that, I think you've shown a couple for grade 10, but can we get them for all grades? And can that be posted online just so that it's easy for people to take a look at?
Bar chart?
Yeah, the bar charts that show progress over several years. I think that would be helpful.
The way we used to do it.
You didn't want to make the presentation.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate that. But it's good information for people to take a look at.
Anything else? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
John, excellent. Thank you. I believe the next item on your agenda is my self-reflection. I forwarded this to you before our meeting that was rescheduled because of Rosha Shauna last week. And so over the last few years, we've taken different approaches. If I start to summarize, and if anyone wants me to stop in any particular area, we put this on the web so that the public can read it. First of all, it's my self-reflection, but I want to acknowledge, first of all, Mr. Pavlichek and Ms. Sheridan before him, the role of the chair, I don't think the public understands, as a counsel and tutorial for the superintendent, and I appreciate your time and always responding to me and giving me advice. I would say that this school committee has perfected, and I've been watching and worked with school committees over the years, the subcommittee model is working and it's helping the school district. So for the time that you're putting in, I said to Mr. Walker, you all have full-time employment. And so for you to give that time early in the morning or evenings, but your counsel in finance, your counsel around policy, your counsel around health and wellness and facilities are making a difference in the district. So the time you're giving is not because you're elected officials, you bring your expertise, and when you reflect on every one of those subcommittees, even in the finance, a staff member attends as a viewer, there are citizens and teachers who participate, and we're making a difference. So if even going through my own self-evaluation, many of the subcommittees have driven the achievements. And so when you reflect on last year, again, where our primary goal is the achievement, to increase and improve the achievement of every student in the Milton Public Schools. And to that end, you had our MCAS presentation tonight. When each principal presents, they will address the individual achievement in their school. At our next meeting, next Wednesday night, the high school team, they're putting in a tremendous amount of work into their advanced placement presentation for you. Again, beyond just the data that I gave you, what courses we offer, the number of students in the courses, how we look at the courses and decide are those the courses we should run. And so again, you'll get that information tomorrow. And then any follow-up questions? We have an evening planned for you on our SAT and PSAT data. And all of these, today we had- And all of these, today we had somebody from the SAT AP organization in, and all of these are intertwined and each of them support one another. So I think that those will be beneficial for the public and beneficial for you. Last year, we saw improvements. Last year was also marked by what I call our internal audits. DESE coming in and evaluating our special education, civil rights practices and procedures, English learning education, Title I in the McKinney-Ventow Act. Those are outstanding audits of ourselves. A group comes in from the Department of Education and we do a tremendous amount of pre-work. They come in, they live in the Milton public schools, similar to NEAS, they ask, they see small groups, and then they come up with a plan. And today, Mr. Phelan, our administrator of special education and our English learner director, worked on our CAP, our corrective action. So the DESE, again, that was a public document, it's on the web. I can give it to you again, I will give you a copy of what we're submitting tomorrow, today and tomorrow, the areas that they wanted us to work on. But I think that you would agree with me that in all those areas, we were, we received outstanding reviews, except in our English learner education, we had work to do. Work around translating all of our documents in other languages and we have made strides and we've put a tremendous amount of work into that. So we will have a presentation for you on our CAPs, our corrective action plans that we have submitted to the state. Now, they react to those plans. They go over the detail and, again, a tremendous amount of work, Mr. Phelan, Ms. Glasby and Ms. Buchanan. Last year was also marked with, again, change is good. We had a new Glover principal, a new Cunningham principal, a new director of science and a new vice principal at the PS school. At the same time, we ran searches last year for a new high school principal, world language director and Colley-Cott principal and administrative pupil personnel. So that's a lot of new administrators in the district. And again, that's the work. Ms. Sheridan said the teacher in the classroom is integral. But again, the principals and the curriculum leader, their content knowledge, their skill in leading is very, very important. And I saw those recruiting efforts and hiring as huge in the future of the Milton public schools. And they were successful hires. I would tell you a little story, a secret. When I started as superintendent, our organization gives us a mentor. And so I had Dr. Walsh, who was a famous superintendent. He came from Boston, but he was in the Brookline schools. So when he first came in to see me my first year, he said, "Your responsibility is to work on the budget and to get those important dollars for the Milton public school students." And I took his message and his charge seriously. So he came back the next quarter and I had to report to him about my progress. And he said, I said, "So what did I get this time?" So he said, "Well, you got an A the first time, but you got an A minus this time." I said, "That's all right, but what happened?" He said, "You talked too much about the budget." And so I said, "I took you seriously." And this budget process is serious. And it's a very, very important process to be transparent and to take every dollar that the taxpayers give us and to maximize every one of those dollars. And here in Milton, we're very fortunate to have outside sources. The Milton Foundation, if I start, the Copeland Foundation, boosters, fame, favor, the PTOs. And again, those, I always say to my peers here, those are hard-earned, can and bottle drives. And again, they entrust us with the most important thing in their lives, their children, but they're supporting us financially. And so we've worked collaboratively with the Milton Warrant Committee and the other departments. And I would tell you one more story. Today, yesterday, I went to the department head meeting. Mr. Mern holds a monthly department head meeting. And my predecessors never went to those meetings because I think they felt that Mr. Mern runs the meetings and they felt that they were peers with Mr. Mern. So I go to the meetings with Mr. Gillis and Mr. Phelan and we gather information and we're part of a bigger town. And so Mr. Mern said to everyone, "When you go to those full-day warrant committee meetings, you have to stay to the end like the superintendent." And so I said, "Well, that's not setting me up with my peers." And so, again, the message is that we respect the process and we respect every single dollar that we're given by this town. Last year was marked by, you followed the progress and we kept you updated on really the math review at the middle and high school. And we're in the beginning of a three-year implementation. You'll have reports each quarter on that math implementation. Again, to Ms. Kelly's point, this is work that we're doing all of the time, the curriculum development and the assessment and the alignment. And last year was marked by the second year of the two-year study, self-study before NEAS comes in November. I would say to you, when we go through this report, and I will be brief, that one way that I'm looking to improve communications, when you ask questions of me or you make references at school committee, now at each meeting, I have a folder for you tonight. And so from your last two weeks, these are the kinds of things that you've asked. For the core curriculum, Mr. Walker asked questions of the athletic director. Any kinds of questions you asked for at each meeting, we'll give you for you to review because I find myself sending you emails and I wouldn't like to receive emails in the context every day when I was working, "Well, what is the Milton public school sending now?" So in an attempt to better communicate with you, we have this information. You have asked for the self-study. It was interesting today, parent Gary Kelly, this self-study and Ms. Kelly and I missed the presentation. But when the high school team came in and presented last spring to you on the self-study, they explained to you how there were groups that worked on each of the standards, teachers, parent representatives. And the self-study is complete and it's been submitted to the NEAS visiting team. We've been notified who the chairs are of the team. And I'm asking you in this memo to keep that Sunday, I believe it's November 7th, free because you have your own session with the visiting team. The school committee does, Sunday the 6th. Is it Sunday the 6th? Yes, there's going to be a reception here. The team comes and there's a reception and then they meet with the subgroups, but the visiting team wants to meet with the school committee. So I have put in here the completed self-study for you. Interesting that over the years that we've been working with NEAS, the report is not public. It's not a public report. I've put the actual reference in. In all of New England, but in Massachusetts, someone once asked through the Freedom of Information Act for a copy of it. And so I've given you the exact verbiage that it's a working document. So I've given it to the school committee. When NEAS comes in, they'll come up with a report that will be completely public. We'll present it to the public, we'll have forums, but I've put the working document in this packet for you.
I'm sorry, but are you saying the self-study isn't a public document?
Let me tell you the exact line that, let me read to you. The commission, the NEAS commission recommends, and they say in all of New England, only in Massachusetts, as it only ever been given out publicly, that the self-study materials not be reviewed by the school board or the public since they are considered to be working documents. In Massachusetts, however, a ruling issued by the Secretary of State's office determined that member schools can be required to make it public to interested parties who've been approved by the professional staff. So they really want this a working document, but I think it's important for the school committee to see it before you have your meeting with the NEAS visiting team. But I'll give you the actual documentation that in all of New England, it's, again, it's a working document, really from the high school staff to the NEAS commission.
Ms. Kelly?
But if it's distributed to the school committee, it then becomes a public document and anyone who would want to review it can review it. So, is that okay? That, just as long as you make sure...
And again, it's a working document, but, you know, in the spirit of being completely transparent, I wanted you to understand. So circle that on your calendar. And then they're here for three days. This leadership team's working with the high school leadership team. They come at dawn, they leave at dusk, and they actually walk with students from class to class, they meet with small groups of students. And really what their charge is, for all of the curriculum that they've been given and all of the self-study, they're here to really evaluate Milton High School. And it is a very, very valuable process. So, again, last year would be marked, and I would, as I reviewed this to present to you, I would say that, I would also have to add, last year was also marked by the creation of the Consolidated Facilities Department. If we look back on last year and the work of this school committee and administration, a tremendous amount of work went into the formation of that committee. And I would tell you, it's off to an outstanding start, the Consolidated Facilities Department. Improving student achievement. I had goals under student achievement. Milton's six schools will achieve adequate yearly progress in English and math in the aggregate in all subgroups. For the presentation, you could advance that tonight. At the elementary, we achieved that goal. At the high school, but at the subgroups, at the middle school, we did not achieve that goal for the subgroups. And that is a goal that will transfer over to the achievement of every student every day in school. Again, after this presentation that was very timely, the median student growth percentile for Milton's six schools would be at a minimum of 50 or above. You understand from just watching that presentation that the one area that was below 50 was grade 10 math. Milton High School students will perform in the 48th to 50th range in each of their subsections of the PSAT, which will eventually drive their SAT scores. Again, the results of our juniors taking the PSATs was that in critical reading and math, the critical reading, math and writing skills, the writing skills were at 47, not achieving that goal of 48 to 50. When the high school team comes and does their SAT presentation, I think you'll get a better understanding of the value of administering the PSATs. We're able to do that because of the Copeland Family Foundation to all students. I would tell you, years ago, you had a school committee member, Lori Stillman, who said, "I'm dropping my child off in the front of Milton High School and I want to know why every single Milton High School junior isn't in there taking the PSATs." And we worked with the Copeland Foundation and as a result, every one of our sophomores and every one of our juniors take the PSAT in school. And I'm here to tell you that that's driving the achievement in this town. That's important. That's important enough for us to take the time to have every student with the, so no student who can't afford to take the PSAT in their sophomore or their junior year is not taking it. Everyone is taking it. And the results are used by the curriculum leaders.
Ms. Kelly had a question to follow.
Just a question on the page that has the data. It says 2010. Is that because it's the calendar year?
Yes, good question. Milton High School's advanced placement program, again, I'm giving you the bar that I set. There are layers underneath this data that the presentation will present to you. But again, I've given you the chart that the number of students remained the same, the number of tests taken increased, and the number of 3, 4s and 5s went up by eight percentage points. And again, we're always looking at who's taking these tests. So Dr. Arangio and I, and Dr. Arangio will present, that I said, "Well, what if it's the same, you know, if it's Glenn Pavlichek taking five rather than four tests? I want to make sure it's more children taking the test, more students." And the diversity of the group taking the test expanded. And again, there are issues, looking at which AP courses we should run and looking at the scores, but the overall picture of improved achievement and increased achievement is there. A very important goal is to develop a pathway from grade six to grade 12 on this advanced placement track. Because my analogy is you don't decide at grade 11, "I think I'll take an advanced placement course." So we're working really hard from sixth grade on to when we started this work, middle school teachers hadn't seen an advanced placement test. So we're working with our sixth, seventh and eighth grade teachers around the advanced placement, really tests, for them to see the tests, for understand the skills that have to be built in the sixth grade, to build on that skill base so that when our students get to the high school, they have the skills and the knowledge to enter into these AP courses. And again, we have a Milton resident who's the vice president of the SATs and he will tell you, Mr. Doyle, that the highest correlation to success in college is sitting and taking an AP course. And we want our students to take multiple courses and we want all of our students to have those options. So I've outlined for you the work that we're doing in each of the disciplines and I worked with the actual curriculum leaders so that they've given you what they're doing at the middle school to prepare for, our students to be prepared for advanced placement courses. They've given you, again, John Phelan will tell you that the only person that I don't say no to is anyone who wants to go to the advanced placement professional development in the summer. For me, I've found out professionally that when these teachers go for this training, it's called AP camp, for a week with their peers, again, they're with their peers from across New England or the country, that, let's say they teach one AP class, the other four classes, they're going to be better teachers. And so I've outlined for you, directly from the department heads, the kind of work that they wanted to highlight that they're doing in their departments beginning at grade six. A very important goal, just before we go into goal number two, is picking up and identifying students who, coming into the high school, are at risk, but also identifying students who we want to challenge. And so one of my goals was to set up a program last summer and use a model in Brookline. We didn't have the funding to do that. We set up a very successful program and identified students that we're going to stay with during their four years of high school. We have used this model before. But our goal, and one of John Phelan's goals, working with the Citizens for Diverse Milton, is to find funds outside of the school budget because in this work with advanced placement courses, it takes Saturday and after-school and before-school tutorials. And several of our teachers do this for no reimbursement. But we want to make it part of the program that all of our students, if they want to access Saturday morning extra help, that we'll be able to run those programs before after-school evenings are on Saturdays. So I, we partially achieved that goal in that we created a very successful bridge model that we're working on, but we have to work on the enrichment piece. Working into goal two, the reference that Mr. Phelan has made, curriculum development, professional development and student assessment, this is the work that during the next three months will be rolled out to parents and up on the web. The first goal is to work with the Milton High School faculty through their self-study. We achieved that goal. The second and third goals were the Massachusetts frameworks, the new frameworks and the assessments to match them. Again, and to Ms. Kelly's point, I outlined the, high school is in an excellent position with the assessments. The work done at the middle school, you're exactly right, on assessments are outlined in the script and at the elementary, outstanding work has been done. And then in this work of, in this second goal of offering to all students, again, we work within a certain budget. But as I, we go into the budget cycle, I've often explained and explained to the public, when we meet as a leadership team, we put non-negotiables up. There are certain areas, there are certain courses. I would tell you, when I saw that presentation tonight, I thought back, sitting at this table, when we started the CoTaoT program. You know, I'm here to tell you, the CoTaoT program, that this community is supported, the parents now request their children to be in CoTaoT classes, that you have funded and has kept children in the Milton public schools. I want you to know that's directly related to that, to several of those gains and achievement for special education children. So children with special education needs. And our goal to expand using existing funds and, again, having to have fees, we're always looking to enrich. And as I say to people, I want to offer Milton public school students what every other student across this state... what every other student across this state and this country options. Parents at the elementary level, at no cost to the school budget, the dosing program, again, at a high fee, but I should send you the emails about your successful crew team club. You have a rugby club. The girls' golf team is one, is, no girl has signed up for golf, that's coeducational. We didn't achieve that goal of putting a boys' volleyball team in. We have a thriving robotics program, and because of Milton Foundation for Education, we have a Saturday program. Third goal, to continue to work collaboratively with the Milton School Committee, to communicate the budget needs of the Milton Public Schools to the community. We have an appointment, one of the goals not achieved last year, but we have an appointment on October 12th at 1:30 with Town Hall on this integrated payroll and personnel. We're working with our finance subcommittee, keeping them abreast of that. To restructure, this has been an issue over the last five to 10 years on the Student Activities Account at Milton High School, through the work of Mr. Gillis and Dr. Drauder and the high school team. That ish, that goal has been achieved, and we're meeting all of the laws with our high school Student Activities Account. Again, to work collaboratively with the Town of Milton to implement the new Consolidated Facilities Department, this committee and this leadership team, to put a tremendous amount of work that department has been created. To research, evaluate, and implement cost savings in the following areas, I think that you would agree, in energy, working with Bill Ritchie and Mr. Gillis, we have achieved, and, again, they're outlined here, energy savings. And in transportation, you've followed the progress of our special ed, attempted collaboration with Charms, and we're working out of that, and we're looking for savings in that. I want to report to you that the, you've followed, that the Milton Foundation for Education funded a grant writer. And so, we worked with the grant writer for two years, and I worked with Ms. Sheridan and Kristen Bagley-Jones, and our grant writer, his grants were outstanding. We had them evaluated by an outside, successful source, but as somebody said to me, we're a little fish in a large ocean. And so, we weren't really earning back the money that the MFE was spending, and so, we don't have the grant writer with us this year. We're with the MFE, looking how to redirect those funds. But, I have attached for you, in my self-evaluation, all of the grants that were written by the grant writer, those that were successful and not successful. And we worked in collaboration with him. To fully communicate to the public and advocate for the Milton Public School budget, we achieved that goal. And to create a committee that will provide the school committee with information on school choice, your school committee peer, Mr. Hugh Bandit, asked for that, under the leadership of Mr. Phelan, we achieved that goal. We had that presentation, and you voted not to be a school choice community. Continue to develop best practices of communication and public relationships to support the Milton Public Schools. To improve communications between parents and staff through the increased use of EdLine. We did not achieve that goal. It's one of the goals for this coming year, to work with our teachers, so that it's just not teachers, to have that expectation from principals and department heads of every teacher, to use EdLine and to better work and provide our parents with training on how to access EdLine and to improve that line of communication. That was a goal that was only partially achieved. To continue to work monthly and quarterly, to inform and address, when I became superintendent, this was one of the charges I was given, and I could say that we effectively communicate with these groups, and I would tell you that these groups give the Milton Public Schools a tremendous amount of support. As I look down, last year, I had a strong relationship with the Special Education PAC, but we have new administrator of Special Education who will move into that line, but I will continue to go to the monthly meetings. And I think if you read over that list, every one of these groups and organizations enhance the experience for our children in the Milton Public Schools. To keep the Milton Public School Committee fully informed on all issues, self-examining myself, looking at my own communication style, I'm going to work this year on every Friday to keep you abreast of the goings-on and give you a look ahead for the next week. And, again, to respond to Mr. Walker, Ms. Kelly had asked tonight about the era, and I think you would find it very, very interesting, from DESE, all the work that was done with school districts about this error in the math, and really, what the Department of Education had to do to communicate to all those schools. So, I'll give that to you each week and communicate with you every Friday. To continue to communicate the accomplishments of the Milton Public Schools through new and creative means. I didn't feel that we really achieved this goal last year, and I've worked with our principals and department heads. I think that we should be giving our students opportunities at the local and national level, be it their writing or science fairs, to put our students and our staff's work out there to be recognized. So, that's, our principals understand that that's a priority goal for me. My fifth goal in the area of personnel, we outlined at the beginning, the new personnel that we hired and integrated into the Milton Public Schools. Also, to continue to have a, and to support, a strong qualified staff. I've put for you, again, realizing that you may not have gone over, our agreed-upon evaluation tool, I've given you a copy of the teacher's contract, and tabbed for you the evaluation tool. I would tell you that DESE is coming out in all the school districts that are involved in Race to the Top, have to use this new evaluation tool. And there are so many similarities to the evaluation tool used by the Milton Public Schools, the rubrics, and the three-year cycle, that I'll give you the No Race to the Top evaluation tool, and you'll see many similarities to the agreed-upon evaluation tool that we use in the Milton Public Schools. To work collaboratively with the school committee in the hiring, we outlined at the beginning of our new administrator of pupil personnel, Colleen Cott, principal, and world language director. And to increase the percentage of qualified staff in the Milton Public Schools, I, we give you different versions of outlines of our data, but Shawn Walsh and John Phelan prepared for you, over the last three years, a breakout of the new staff that we have hired. And I'll give you, after our October 1 data is entered and accepted, the breakout of our staff and our rankings and diversity. So, that's my self-evaluation. We have now given out our district goals to our principals, and they're working with them on their site plans, and those were really established through your retreat and my two-day retreat with the administrative team. And now, those goals are in the hands of our principals, we're working with them, with their staff and site councils. Thank you.
Just in terms of procedure, the former procedure we have, in fact, still have in our policy book, would be that school committee members would submit their thoughts about the superintendent's presentation tonight to the chair, and who would consolidate it, present it at a future school committee meeting. That, however, is now not in conformance with the open meeting law. So, it will take an extra meeting to do this, but basically, I would ask you to come in next Wednesday at our next meeting with your thoughts and responses on this. We will do a discussion in an open session about thoughts and responses to this, and then, from that, I will give you an evaluation of the superintendent to be presented to her at the following meeting. So, that's the process now, given the new open meeting law. So, if you would take this into account for the next six days till we meet again. Ms. Sheridan?
I was just going to say that that was part of the charge that the policy subcommittee had, to look at the policy and try and update it, and we have contacted MASCE, and they are currently working on rewording that themselves, and plan to come out with an updated version for our, to recommend to school districts and school committees. That won't be out until around January, so I'm just going to wait.
Okay. Any other questions on the superintendent's evaluation? Ms. Kelly?
We have suspended that policy, right? Didn't we take a vote to do that? Just, it's a formality, doesn't really matter, but...
I think we did last year, just because it wasn't, it didn't conform with the open meeting laws.
Right. And generally speaking, when policy and law collide, you have to go with the law.
We have to defer. Thank you. Just the school happenings, I want to recognize the Celebrate Milton Committee. Last Sunday, Celebrate Milton was a huge success here at Milton High School. Kevin Murray recognized Milton High School's 50 students, providing their community service hours. Celebrate Milton couldn't happen without those students setting up and breaking down. It was an unbelievable event, recognized for the Community Builder Awards, Pat Desmond, Reverend George Wells, and Ms. Blue. It was a wonderful day. It brings the community out, and, again, I believe it was their 17th or 18th year for Celebrate Milton. Huge success. For the last two days, you may have seen in the press, any middle or high school parent has received several notices. Rachel's Challenge was brought into the Milton Public Schools in part of our bigger anti-bullying initiative. Again, I want to reiterate to the public that Rachel's Challenge was paid for by outside funding. Celebrate Milton, the team of Alan Cron, Kathy Sullivan, Lisa Veldron, and Rich Guarino, all Milton Public School employees, wrote grants, Celebrate Milton, the Milton Foundation for Education, Milton High School PTO, and Pierce PTO, all contributed to the funding of Rachel's Challenge. Ms. Kelly was there last night, and it was positively received at the middle school and the high school, and I have received positive feedback from parents, staff, and students alike. Also during, this has been a busy place here at Milton High School. This week, we had our Japanese exchange. For two days, a parent, Steve Shapiro, has partnered Milton High School with a high school in Japan, and each day, 200 Japanese students spend the day at Milton High School. And it was very poignant this year because of the tragedy in Japan last March. And to sit in that auditorium and to see our jazz band perform for those 200 Japanese students, and then to see the Japanese students stand up, and they do a dance, and they did a martial arts presentation, and then, in English, the Japanese student said, "America was the first country who came to my country's assistance," in English. It was very, very moving. The head lead teacher speaks, Dr. Arangio spoke, and the students appeared with a partner, and they exchanged gifts. And I'm here to tell you, there's no barrier that high school students can't overcome, because this place was alive for two days. One quick story, they're about to get on their buses to go off to Washington and New York, and John and Matt and I see the buses stopped. I go, "Something happened." So, I go down, and one child had, Japanese student had lost her passport. So, of course, I said, "Why do you give them the passports? Why don't you hold their passports?" And so, we spread back out to the five classes she had gone to, and I kept saying to the lead teacher, "Do you think it could be back in the hotel room? Do you think it could be?" But, she swore she had that passport with her. So, after a long search, they got back on the bus, and it was in her hotel room. And so, the story is, around the world, the issues are the same. Dr. Arangio's message was very poignant. He said to the students, "Be sure to exchange email addresses, because maybe next week, maybe next month, or maybe 20 or 50 years from now, you now have somebody in another country that you're going to be able to look up, communicate with, and maybe to begin to pen-pal with." So, experiences like that, to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point, they aren't the MCAS result, the AP 3, 4, and 5, but I think they like changing. I have to tell you one more quick story. When Dr. Arangio was out in front of the school, and he saw the buses come up, his eyes got about this big. And so, I told the story how, when Mr. Shapiro and John Phelan and I went to see Dr. Drauder, the then-principal, Dr. Drauder was, "You never even have assemblies at Milton High School. Everything's business. Seven periods a day, no studies, you're in class." And so, we went in and we presented this option about these two days. And I often giggled to myself, because I don't know what we did, but he let us bring it into Milton High School. And so, last year, when the Japanese high school announced the days, Dr. Drauder came to see me, and he said, "Mary, we have a problem. The days the Japanese students are coming are on the Nias visit." So, I said, "Well, I'm not going to waste..." I love the Japanese students, but those days, I'll wait it 10 years for these three Nias days, so they can go to Pierce or another town. And so, Dr. Drauder left me, and he came back, and he said, "I solved the problem." I said, "Great, they're going to Pierce, they're going to Wellesley, or Braintree." He said, "No, I changed Niasg." So, I said, "You changed Niasg?" He said, "Yes, because I think those two days are so powerful." And so, and everything happens for a reason. I think having Niasg in November is better than having to rush into the school year. But, I often giggle that we had to snucker him to get the Japanese exchange in here, and he ended up to be the biggest advocate. You heard tonight, the Booster-sponsored Golf and Tennis Tournament, and that date to circle on your calendar is October 18th. These two gentlemen will not be playing golf, and they don't play tennis. She was making a joke. They don't leave school. They don't leave school, and once a teacher thought they were going to help us out and go play golf for the day. So, that's a school day. But, I would say that our coaches and teachers, and all of you, and all of us, join the event at the end to thank all the contributors. The Monster Dash, again, circle that on your calendar. That is an event to be seen at Cunningham Park on Sunday, October 30th. I'd like you also to circle, and I know you've all been invited, but for the viewing public, the Library Gala is October 19th. And I'm privileged to sit on a board at the Milton Public Library, but I want to tell you another little secret, that when Jean Boylan, the head of the Milton Library Board, sends out these emails, high and low, and to everyone they know, do you know what he puts in the email? "Come to the Library Gala to support Milton Public School children, Milton's children, so they can learn to read, and they can enjoy reading." So, to think that, of all the groups that the Milton Public Schools services, that Jean Boylan really targets Milton children when she's out advocating for people to go to the Library Gala. I want to recognize tonight, Milton High School speech therapist, Robin Lee, who also wears another hat. What other hat does she wear?
Volleyball.
Volleyball coach. She's going to be inducted into the Girls' Volleyball Coaches Hall of Fame on October 18th, 16th. I will be representing you at that event. Also, circle on your calendar, the first weekend in November, Dr. Noreen Diener-Badet kidnapped me today, and I sat and saw the opening number of Footloose. So, save your money, bring all your relatives and friends, and I will promise you that you'll think that you're in New York City or in Boston, they have outdone themselves. If you went to Celebrate Milton, you got a little snippet of it, but I whispered to her, "Every year, they get better, and this is extraordinary." So, Footloose, Milton High School Play, the first weekend in November, the Pierce Middle School Play, you have a little time to circle your calendar for January, they're taking more time, guys and dolls. And I've met some of the students, and the parents of the students who are so happy, they think they're performing in New York City down at the Pierce School. Niasg Visit, again, will you circle that? First Sunday? It's the 6th? I don't know yet. You'll be at a reception, and you'll also have your own audience with the Niasg team. I'm going to just turn this over to Mr. Phelan for a moment, who's going to report on our committee on examining the start times for our school, and how we're going to roll out that committee, the corrective action. And tomorrow, a reminder to all parents and guardians, I don't think a Milton Public School child will forget a student, there is no school for students tomorrow. Tomorrow is Professional Development Day. Mr. Phelan?
Sure. We have been charged with a committee that we will put together, that will be made up of parents, teachers, and administrators. I will attend the next PTO president's night and ask for parent participation from that group. We will work with the building principals to get a few teachers, and we have already solicited... solicited through our research agency, articles for best practices, and recent research on start times for schools and different ages of students from elementary, middle, and high school. Again, this is with the purpose of finding out whether or not, if in fact, we go to alter our transportation cycle of how we, you know, start our schools with the middle school, high school going first, and then our two elementaries going second, and our last two elementaries going a little later, if in fact we...